Counsel Reyes.
Present.
Counsel Monte.
Here.
Counsel Aquino.
Present.
Counsel Bernal.
Present.
Counsel Vice President Rivera. And Counsel President Moran.
Here. Please write for a moment of silence for Victor Manuel Vargas Aquino, who passed away this past week. He was the father-in-law of Representative Marcos Devers and Vicky's Devers. Our thoughts and praise that we have in his family. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America. And for the Republic, for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and intestines for all.
First item on the agenda is acceptance of the minute for November 19. Looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
But here's second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, seven. Next item on the agenda is public participation. Participant, you have two and a half minutes to state your comments. After two minutes, the bell will ring. You have 30 seconds to wrap up your comments. Please address the city council as a whole, not as individuals. First participant, Maria Fiado. Name and address for the record, please, Maria.
Um, the reason I want to talk to you is because at Museum Square, there are lots of problems over there. One of them is the lighting on Canal Street. There's lighting on one side, but not on the other side, so it becomes a safety issue pretty much throughout the whole side of Museum Square. No lights. There's no lights on the outside of the buildings of the...
Hey, thanks. There's no lights on the outside of the garages to light up the area of Museum Square. And there's no cameras where all the break-ins are happening. The break-ins are happening on Methuen Street, not on the back end, and that's where the cameras are. So we need cameras on the other side for all the people that are being broken into. The other thing is that at Museum Square, we get our excise taxes. They're thrown on our... in front of all of our mailboxes. We have a ledge, and they're just thrown there. They're not delivered to us. If we owned our own homes, they would be brought to us, to our house, and hand-delivered, instead of just throwing in a pile, and we're supposed to know that that's what that is. We're supposed to look for them ourselves. Today, I found one that's been opened by somebody else and was left there. So the person's information is just left for anybody to read. And I think that is unacceptable, and if those are our excise taxes and we're responsible to pay them, I think it's responsibility of the city to make sure we get them. So, that's my thing.
Thank you. Next participant.
Yeah, and that's the other thing. With all that lighting... I'm sorry. With all the lighting that's missing, one of the biggest things is, we just had that gentleman this past summer who was found in the canal. There was no lighting there for anybody to see anything. So, I mean, how many days did he... He stayed there for three days before they found him. If there was better lighting, I'm sure that they... You know, it would have been a different situation. But the lighting is a big, big issue, especially since our kids are dropped off over there at night, and it's... Now it's winter, and it's dark over there. But, that's my thing.
Thank you. Next participant, Carlos Cabrera. Name and address for the record, please, Carlos.
Yes, good evening. My name is Carlos Cabrera, as you mentioned. I reside on 10 Diamond Street in Lawrence. The reason why I'm here is because we have signed this petition. About 30 people have signed it. People that resides at Saunders Crossing Apartments on Diamond Street alone. The reason for it is because we want security cameras to be installed in this area. Why? This is just an example. I have a picture of my wife's car. All four tires were stolen on November 19. The car next to it, by coincidence, the owner reported to me that this same car, the green one, was stolen twice from the same location on Diamond Street. And ironically, few days after my wife's car was... tires were stolen, another car had the tires stolen as well. So, the situation is getting out of control. I went to the Lawrence Police Department, and I got... I gathered, you know, I obtained this report, and this is only on Diamond Street. There are 26 crimes that have occurred on this street. So we definitely need your support. We need the City of Lawrence to be engaged in getting security cameras. These runs from robbery with knife, from larceny, you know, trying to break into the apartments. And so, this is a situation that is getting out of control. I personally am a father of a child. My wife is currently pregnant, and I work at night. So I'm concerned that when she's alone, someone is going to try to break in. So we need your support. We need people to get engaged. I tried to get the management agency in this complex, and they said that this is a street that belongs to the City of Lawrence. So it's something that you have to handle it with all the respect. I know you guys are busy, but we need to get integrated, to make you aware this is a major issue. Again, these are all the signatures. I was the one gathering these signatures, and the people who signed it, they wanted to follow up on this. They want to get an answer. Thank you.
Can you drop off a copy over here, Carlos?
I gave it to Elaine.
You have it, Rick.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next participant, Dick Blatchford. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Dick Blatchford, 3 Harrison Street in what's about to become a great city. Outgoing Mayor Lantego likes to quote Dr. Martin Luther King. In one of his rare English-speaking newspaper articles, he quoted, "The time is always right to do the right thing." It's very true, but unfortunately, the right thing did not always happen under his administration. His administration ran rampant for four years with allegations of corruption, misleading agendas, inability to lead the school district, non-transparency, and fear. If you didn't agree with how he ran the city, you were labeled, and I quote, "an enemy of the people." What kind of an individual says that? Almost sounds like a dictatorship. So in the spirit of Dr. King, I'd like to offer another quote that benefits the City of Lawrence today. That quote is from Dr. King's "I Have a Dream" speech. Free at last, free at last. Thank God almighty, we are free at last. At the time when he made the speech, it applied to the civil rights movement in America. But today, it applies to the City of Lawrence and all the people who, and I emphasize, all of the people, are at last free to have a government that cares for all of the people of this progressive city, not just those who favor the mayor's power base. We have a new administration coming in, and it has promised honesty, integrity, and transparency in government, the way the majority of the people, and the results of the election reflect that, want to see the city governed going forward. The right thing for Lawrence is finally here. On January 2nd, the city will be moving forward with a new and progressive administration. Administration that will unite the north, south, east, and west of this city. When that administration leaves, it can truly say that it left the city in a better place. But most importantly, united. We're able to... We will be able to hold our heads high and say we are from Lawrence and proud of it, finally. Thank God... Thank you for your time. Free at last, free at last.
Thank you. Next participant, Dick Russell. Strang you to the City Hall.
Good evening, councilors. My name's Dick Russell. I reside at 34 Cross Street. You know, I never even realized Martin Luther King said that. You know, the older I get, the smarter Martin Luther King appears to be. I gotta put that... Okay, several questions for the president and future administration in this building. Has anybody put a stop payment on the outgoing mayor's street paving or repaving job? I understand the paving process and know that it works if properly done, and it will last quite a while. My question is, why are the newly repaved roads falling apart after two months? A perfect example is where Foster Street crosses Salem Street. Both sides of the newly paved surface has holes in it, and the center of the road where the lanes of paving join have holes in it. How well will this newly paved surface stand up to several cycles of melting and freezing? And also, for that matter, stand up to snow plowing? Oops, I forgot. Nobody in the city puts their blade down while they plow the city streets. Another question is, will the selection process for the new police chief... Will it continue, or will the process start from scratch? Will any private... If it does start from scratch, will any private citizens be allowed to be part of the selection committee? If not, how come? Finally, how much has the Lantego administration cost us in legal fees, legal settlements, and salaries of suspended city officials in his four-year term of office? Any answers? I'd like to see that one. Thank you.
Thank you. That ends public participation. These names will be submitted to the clerk's office to be archived. Next item on the agenda is public hearings. Counsel, I'd like to take document 28113 out of order.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, seven. Next item on the agenda is document 281, FY 2014 Tax Classification. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 281, 2013, notices hereby given the City Council a hold of public hearing Tuesday, December 3, 2013, in City Council chambers, 200 Commons Street at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed approval of a split tax rate that shifts the tax burden between residential and open space properties in commercial, industrial, and personal property classes for FY 2014 in order to establish the residential and commercial tax rate for the City of Lawrence, Massachusetts. Interested taxpayers are encouraged to present information by appearing at the public hearing. Written comment and information may be submitted on this matter as well. Please forward any written comments to the Office of the City Clerk, 200 Commons Street, Room 107, Lawrence, Mass., by 4:30 p.m. on Tuesday, December 3. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity, as published in the newspaper on November 26.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody wishing to be heard? Name and address for the record, please.
President Moran and Honorable Counselors of the Board of Counselors here in the City of Lawrence, my name's Will Carpenter, and I'm Vice President for the Merrimack Valley Chamber. I've been for many years. I know I've appeared before many of you in past years, especially at this time of year in late November, early December. I want to thank you for allowing me to present once again. And the reason I'm here is because here in Lawrence, we have nearly 400 businesses that are members of the Merrimack Valley Chamber of Commerce. And of course, we are headquartered right here across the street at 264 Essex Street. I simply want to remind you in your decision-making process to remember that the businesses of Lawrence are the backbone of Lawrence. They support our schools. They support our veterans. They support our civic organizations. They support nonprofits and charities. And perhaps most importantly, they provide jobs for the citizenry of Lawrence. And it's difficult enough for them to provide these jobs and keep people on payroll in these tough economic times. And so we would ask respectfully that you consider not increasing, and if at all possible, decrease the tax burden on businesses to allow them to continue to employ people and provide development and growth for the City of Lawrence. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name's Dick Russell, still Dick Russell, still live at 34 Cross Street. I don't know if this is the proper place to bring this up, but I know of the land... I'm trying to get the proper terminology. The land value use curve, which assesses private property. Is there anything that can be done to equalize that across the board? I have 2,300 square feet, and I'm paying about 14 bucks a square foot as an assessed evaluation. If you look at the land use curve that's been in effect since, I think, the late 1990s, which I think, if I'm not mistaken, was authored or co-authored by Bob Noons, the higher up you go in property or in area, the lesser your tax valuation is per square foot. Up to a certain point, up to about a half acre, it decreases. You get up to about a half acre, it's like $2 or $3 a square foot. I have limited space, and I'm paying X number of dollars. People have big lawns, driveways, garages, and all the amenities that I don't have, and they're getting a free ride. I admit, they have a bigger amount of property that they're taxed on, but my basic thing is, I'd like to find out what can be done on this tax thing to equalize what I pay per square foot and what somebody else with a bigger lot pays per square foot. That's the only thing. I don't know if this is the right place to discuss this issue. I have discussed it with the assessor before. I appealed it. It was rejected. I was told if I didn't like it, to go up before the State Tax Appellate Board. I've had problems with them in the past on an estate. I don't even want to get into the legal ramifications, because you've got to have too many whereas's and therefor's in your proper paperwork before you go up there. So, like I said, I'm curious, is anything going to be done about equalizing the per square foot valuation of the taxes on private property? Thank you.
Anybody else? Name and address for the record, please.
Kathy Ronge, 32 Drakehead Street. I'd just like to ask everybody in the council to think about the owners of three families who, you know, were not rich. Were not getting rich off of three families. And last year, we got hit with the, you know, the taxes, and I see dollar signs, it seems, in the city councilor's eyes when we think about occupancy permits and this and that. There's only so much we can take. I mean, you know, we can't only raise the rent up so high. So I just ask you to think about us poor, three-family owners.
Thank you. Anybody else? Rita, you want to do your presentation now? There's nobody on the public that want to speak on it? No? Okay. I think everybody should have it in their packet.
Yes, we do.
I'll take one, just in case. Hasn't changed, right?
I just added the chaps.
Thanks.
Rita, grab one?
For color?
Just in case you change anything. I know we have it in our packets. Thank you.
Well, I put it in our packets.
Yeah, I think it's the same thing.
May I have one?
I want a color.
Oh, this is in color.
Roger gets colored, none of us.
I do have one color.
Very special.
Oh, looky here.
I don't think we're surprised.
You think?
Yeah.
I thought you thought it was going to end up...
Yeah. I think you should.
Yeah, can you hear me? Yeah, it's on. Okay. Sorry. This evening, the Board of Assessors would like to present our presentation on the classification hearing for fiscal year 2014. For fiscal year 14, our levy is almost $57.5 billion, which is an increase of over 2.5 from last year. We've also increased our new growth this year over 1.2 million. We've been consistently at least $1 million or over for the last several years. This year, we've also added additional $40,000 in amended growth, which comes from omitted bills that were not sent out in January. The state allows us to go back and pick up those bills by mid-June so that we can send them out. That would be real estate or personal property, so it's not just restricted to the real estate. So this is our calculation coming up with our 2.5, prop 2.5 of the levy. And that prop 2.5 is from the levy amount. It does not indicate that a taxpayer's bill will not go up 2.5%. So the people at home should just... When they're looking at a prop 2.5, it does not mean that your bill is not going to go up 2.5. It's 2.5% of what we can collect on total of the city for the whole total real estate For 2014, on average, the city has seen an increase of over 4.5% on our residential values. However, we've seen a slight decrease on the commercial, about 2.25% from last year. The good news is, on the single families, they have seen an increase of over $400 this year compared to a decrease of $9,000 from last year, which is a result of $168,218 for the average single-family home in the city. So this is good news. We've always been seeing a decrease on the single family, where this is the first time we've seen an increase. Our new growth is always a very important factor for us when we're determining our levy limit. And basically, it's the... Any new constructions that's been done in the city, subdivisions, condo conversions, exempt property to the tax rolls, and any new personal property accounts. Like I said, this year, we've gone over 1.2 million, which is good for the city. This will give just a breakdown of all the values in the city. We've gone up, with the exception of commercial property, all values have seen an increase this year. We've gone almost... In total, our total value for 2014 is $2.9 billion, and that's a little over 3.4% from last year. The residential property, last year, we were looking at a negative 1.2%. This year, we're looking at almost a 5% increase. The commercial, like I said, have gone down a little over 5%, basically due to the lack of sales. Our industrial and commercial property has also gone up by an average 2.5%. Our largest taxpayers based on values, our first three are utilities, Mass Electric, Horizon, and Bay State Gas. Then we get into the residential. Buffon's Jefferson is a 240-unit apartment complex on Waverly Road by Boston Market. Fairfield Point, which is River Point Way on 114 across from the Market Basket Plaza, is a 174-unit complex. Hampton on Beacon is also a 240-unit residential complex on Beacon Street. And then we're back into commercial, New Balance Athletic. Chi Energy, which is the hydroelectric plant located on South Broadway. Pipevine and M1 Real Estate is a basic combination of roughly 12 lots. It's the 550 lofts over on Broadway by the Methuen Line. Comcast. 17th Lawrence LLC is the Corporate Express Building in South Lawrence on Glenn Street. And our last one, HJ Brooks, is also located on Glenn Street, is a warehouse over there with Northeast Electric Distributors. This is based... If the city were on a single tax rate, we would be looking at $19.71. But we're not. We shift our rate, so... So as a city, we shift our burden of the tax collector, of the taxes, between the residential and the commercial values. I focus on the 172 factor this year only because that was a factor that council had chosen last year so that you can compare. Obviously, it's up to council what you would like to decide, but this way, you can compare the 172 from last year to this year. If you continue with a factor of 172, there is a $15.55 for the residential, which is a 47 increase, and it's also a 47 increase... 47 cent increase for the commercial based on a rate of $33.90. This slide, just to show you what was chosen in prior years. In 2011, we went to the max at 175. Fiscal year 2012, we were at 173. And last year, a factor of 172 was chosen. This is a breakdown here again, based on a factor of 172. We're looking at over 2.2... Sorry. Billion for the residential, and then you're looking at over 600 for the commercial, industrial, personal property combined, and what the percentage of each class is and what the tax share would be. Again, we're coming back to the 57 million for our levy. Will always be that, no matter what, how the burden is shifted. This will give you a breakdown of all the factors from 170 to 175. Again, I've highlighted the 172 so you can compare and what the difference is. You're looking anywhere from 7 cents to 38 cents, I believe, for the residential. So the lower the factor, the higher the residential goes, and the lower the commercial rate will This will give you a breakdown of exactly the cents. If you look again, highlighted the 172, so you're seeing the 47 cents difference for both commercial and residential. Above that, it will go increments of a few cents for each factor that's available. These next six slides are broken down, on average, tax bill from the singles, the condos, the twos, and threes, the commercial, industrial. I started with the 175, and I've gone all the ways to the 170, and now you can compare. I'm going to go to the 172 so we can compare it from last year to this year. So if we kept the 172, you're looking at an $88.79 increase for the single family. There would be a $30 increase for the condo, 478 for the two-family, a $647 for the three-family, $295 increase for the commercial, and a $2,700 increase for the industrial. There you go. Yep. Thank you.
Can we ask questions?
This is just the chart to give you a comparison.
Counsel Toby has a question before.
Are we able... Can we ask questions while you're presenting this? As you move along? Because sometimes you go by something...
You might forget. Yep, no problem.
Now, you're mentioning that the... For the 1.72 factor for single residents, the average tax... The average tax amount, you have is $88.79?
That would be the average increase.
The average increase. Now, the average is all different homes, and I think I had asked you to do a special...
For the condos and the single, right. That's if you...
Single families and everything else.
Yep, it's with... It's the last two slides of the presentation.
Okay.
I have it up there. I have it up there. That would be the, we broke this, the next two charts are based on average, again, not, you have to remember, these are based on average tax bills comparing 2013 to 2014 of a single family and of a condo. So we've broken it down by neighborhood. You can see, it's a color-coded, so we've broken it down to Mount Vernon, South Union, Everett, Clinton, and then Tower Hill, Arlington District, and Prospect Hill. When we're looking at the average single family, you're looking at South Lawrence as being...
Rita, I see that there's two different columns for the Arlington District. Why is that?
That's, it depends on which section of the city. You notice that Lawrence, sorry, South Lawrence is the highest.
No, I'm...
Be most desirable. And then it, for the same home that's in South Lawrence, as in Arlington District, you can't assess them as the same. You're looking at, there's very, there are a lot of variables that go into it. South Lawrence is on the Andover side of the city. It's bigger homes, better homes, the area is a nicer area. So you can't take a home that's in probably more of like a downtown area and say have them the same.
No, but my question is more, more specific to, here, you detail each particular neighborhood. However, when it comes to the Arlington neighborhood...
Right.
There's two different graph.
Right.
So you have Arlington District and then Arlington District plus?
Plus, right.
You differentiate with the plus.
Oh, okay. I think the Arlington District would be right in the, Arlington, because it gets bigger, it's going out by the Malden Mills, and it goes further out. So the further out, if it's, sorry, if it's more compact, then more, more, almost like a city where the houses are very close to each other. And then as it goes further out, we change the neighborhoods. It's the same like in South Lawrence. It's, you, it's, South Union Street and Everett Street and Clinton Street, they're all in South Lawrence. But they're almost like on the southwest part of the section. They're still in South Lawrence, but they're in the southwest. So the further they get away from the Andover line, the houses get smaller, lots get smaller. It's more congested. It's not as, you know, as a desirable, let's say someone is living in, in the South Lawrence compared to the Arlington District. But that's, Arlington District would be right in the center. I should get the streets and map it out for you. And then the Arlington District plus, you're going a little bit further out. You're not confined into the, to the streets. And I apologize, I should have gotten you a broader map and explained it better.
That, that, that's explicit. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
And then you also requested the average condo. So there's the average condo on the exact same neighborhoods. So however, if you, if you look at this chart, it's, the Everett Street would be more, is more than in the South Colonial Heights, Mount Vernon area. And that's only because they have more condos over there, bigger and larger condos than they have over in the Mount Vernon area. Again, we're looking at the Arlington District is probably the least for the tax bills in the city.
Could you go back to screen number 21? Mount Vernon and Colonial Heights. Basically, most of the homes there are single-family homes.
This is just single-family.
These are all single-family homes?
Just the average single-family homes.
In other words, South Union, single families?
Just single families.
All across the board?
All across the board, yep.
So you happen to know what the, the average assessed value of, of a single-family home turned out to be then?
I, I just did this based on the taxes. I can go back and calculate, take the tax rate and go back and make it, do a reverse, but we didn't do the average...
The tax factor on this one was, Rita, the tax factor for the slide is 1.72.
1.72.
Right. But estimated, the 13 is the blue. And then the red is the estimated.
Drew, you, Council President, can I just?
Councilwoman.
On slide 16, that's the factor at the 1.72, the value that you were working off of for a single-family residential was, looks like 167?
That, what's for last year?
Right, right. So, oh, his question was, what's the average valuation for a single-family this year?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. That, for this year, it'd be 168,212. Last year, it was 167,771.
The average estimate, the average...
The average single-family for 2013 was 167.
The assessed value?
71, yes. Then for 2014, the average assessed value for the single-family is 168,122.
167 versus 168, so it went up about $1,000. The assessed value?
Actually, it was an increase of over $440 from last year. Last year, we were looking at a $440, sorry, for this year, it's a $440 increase from last year's assessed value.
The reason I, I think the reason I asked a lot of these questions when we had this presented at the Budget and Finance Committee was that the average value that was presented for all families was an average increase of last year of something like, whatever it was for last year.
Last year, we had 167.
Yeah, you had 167, that's the, that's the assessed value. This year is 168. Because people were getting, you know, they were told that the average tax increase would be $200 or whatever it was. In a lot of instances, it went up over $400, $500.
Yeah, but if you look at each one, it, I mean, it's, it's based on an average. That average is 50 percent could be higher, 50 percent could be lower. So when you're looking at an average, you're, the average would be right in the middle. So you'll always have 50 percent higher or 50 percent lower, lower. Another thing you have to remember too is when taxpayers get their tax bills in the mail, is if the water is not paid and the sewer lien is attached to the real estate, making the bill seem higher. So if that water bill was not paid under state law, when we send the real estate bill out in January, if there was a $500 or $600 tax bill, a water bill that wasn't paid, they're going to see that included in their tax bill in January. So they, and it, and it always says, and, you know, they should look at their tax bill when they get it. It will say on that tax bill whether there was a lien on the property or not, but it will be included in the real estate bill. So if someone is escrowed and the bank is looking at this number, they don't know that there's a lien on the property. Let's say your tax bill should have been 2,000 for the year, and the water wasn't paid, so the lien is attached to that real estate bill, and now the, the real estate bill is 2,800. Well, the bank sees $800, so they're thinking that, well, that it's increased by more than, you know, what, what it should have been, because they don't, they're not aware of the fact that there's a water lien on the property.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that was it.
Shut it off. Counsel, any question for Rita?
At the beginning of the presentation, I, I should have done what Counsel Lutomi did and asked questions right at the beginning. When we were on that third slide, I, I didn't understand what you said. The slide reads that the average single-family home assessed value in FY 2014 was 168,218. That's a $447 increase from FY 2013 average, which was the 167,771. And I thought I heard you say that's the first time we've seen an increase in the single-family home?
Because last year, we had a $9,000 decrease in the single-family home.
Can you explain, only reason I ask that is, I represent District E, which is Mount Vernon, and I know my own personal property taxes went up. And I know that many of my neighbors called me freaking out because their personal property taxes went up. And so when, when I hear you say this is the first time we've seen an increase in that...
On an average, you have to remember, we've done this like on an average. Some people's home could have stayed the same. Some people's could have gone down, and some people could have gone up. If someone pulls a permit and they, let's say, add in addition to their house, now the value of their house has gone up. If they've added a garage, the value's gone up. If a fireplace is installed in the house, the value's gone up.
Right, I guess what I'm thinking is, back last January 1, when the bills came out, when I got this literally flood of phone calls, I actually met with Mr. Vega from your office, and I pulled Mount Vernon Street, and I compared 2013 with 2012. And it wasn't big, but almost every house, to a house, had an increase on Mount Vernon Street. There's over 500 homes.
Right.
And when I hear you say that there was no increase, when I saw 500 homes all have an increase...
But that's, like I said, we're basing that on average now. If you're taking the whole city, I mean, obviously, the sales in, in Mount, in South Lawrence are going to be higher. So we also have to base that on sales. If we get the sales, all the sales that we have to do, we have to analyze all the sales. So if someone has a house on the market, the idea of buying a house in South Lawrence as opposed to, let's say, the Arlington District, someone is going to buy that house in South Lawrence before they buy, let's say, in the Arlington District. So those sales push the values up. The more sales there are, the more the value is going to go up.
So the, if the fair market values of the houses are going up, then the, in turn, the assessed values of the house would go up?
The house, yeah, absolutely.
So that's what I'm misunderstanding, when I'm hearing you say that that was the first time we've seen an increase.
Right, well, yeah, and the last year, because last year, if you remember, we had a $9,000 decrease in the assessed value of a single-family home in Lawrence. This year, we've gone from seeing a negative to a positive of, it's only, I mean, it's $147. It's not a sizable, but it's still, it's in the plus.
Well, when I hear that on average, if last year was down 9,000, and my whole neighborhood went up, if this year it went up 500, then on average, my neighborhood's going to go up even more than that, based on past practice. So I just, okay, I just brace myself, because, but what, that's why I was just confused, when I hear you say that this is the first time we've seen an increase, when last year, I know, we just got so many calls that...
Right, but like, then again, we're, we're, we're not just like focusing on South Lawrence, we have to focus, you know, on the whole city.
No, of course, but it, so it's, the citywide assessed value on average.
On average, for a single-family, yeah.
Gotcha, okay. The, all right.
Anybody else? I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel, I'm looking for a motion to approve 1.72.
I'd like to make a motion to approve 1.70.
1.70. Do you have a second?
A second?
Any discussion?
Discussion.
Counsel, I'm going to go there.
Thank you. I think it's important to note that, trust me, I probably, I should probably should be saying the very least on this, but, but I, I think it's important, because this is one of those things that, from the Budget and Finance Committee, that we kind of keep dear, near and dear to our hearts. This is the second step in what is the raising of taxes in this community. I think sometimes, because they're disconnected, we raise taxes when we pass the budget. This is not what we're doing today. Today, we're just saying, who gets to pay the taxes we raised in June? That's important for us to remember that. So when we have budgets in front of us, and when a future mayor sends you a budget, and it has a taxing, it has a revenue number in there for pers, for residential taxes, that's when taxes are being raised. This is just who gets to pay the share of the total amount we have to raise. And when you think about that, traditionally, and we, this council and the former council, did a really good job of keeping into effect the amount of taxes that our businesses pay. And our taxes are low because we have a low per capita income. But it's important just for us to remember that we cannot impact negatively our business community. And I haven't done this study recently, but recent, before, about a couple of years, the number, the percentage of increase to businesses on their taxes was so large. Now, we're not saying they shouldn't pay their fair share, it shouldn't be one for one. Clearly, they're in a better position than many of our fixed-income families and our single-family homes, that are in single-family homes, our single-parent homes that are in single-family homes, or in three-deckers. So we, we understand that there's the crunch, but the reason why I always prefer to try to get it as, maybe closer to 170 as possible, is because you really can tell the difference. You know, if we went with 175, I'm, I'm projecting, I'm, I'm saying 170 right now. And that would mean that industrial would pay, and on average, their, their, on average, the industrial amount would go up $2,341. But let's say we wanted to make it more favorable to, to residential, and do 175, or even 172, but let's do 175. It would be almost $1,000 more on average for businesses. Now, if you do 170, it's going to be $108.98, so let's call it $109. But if you did it at 175, you really would only be seven people $50. It's $48 more at 175. So I think that what I point that out, and I know it's a lot of numbers to remember, is the amount that you can decrease the overall industrial tax base average bill is so big while only increasing the overall residential by only a little bit. Can I say that, should I say that again? At 1, at 170, we have the ability to change a $1,000 average tax bill for industrial people, and only increasing that only by 50 bucks more to residential. Now, you think it's counterintuitive, but, you know, and sometimes, some people say that you could pass on some of these taxes to the, by raising taxes, I mean, raising prices, and businesses can do different things because they have positive cash flows. But it's not, it's also sending a message, saying that we do kind of care how much it costs you to be in our city. And New Balance is one of the buildings that I did a, a, a study on, and they had gone up so much that no one should be shocked that, you know, to, you know, if they said, well, taxes here are just too much for New Balance, and they leave. Now, we all know that that would be a negative for the community, so we want to make sure that that doesn't happen. So I always encourage our counselors to ensure that if you don't want taxes to be raised, you should probably vote against the budget if it raises taxes. But once taxes are raised, we should be fair in the way we go about measuring out those taxes. And I think that's why I'm a big fan of 170, because it, there's truth to the, to what we're, we're, we pay for more stuff in the budget, and we, people should feel it in their pocket, so that when we go to raise taxes, we don't get phone calls in December, we should get phone calls in June about the budget. And I hope that counselors would, again, see that small disparity in 175, I mean, at 17, yeah, 175, the average residential tax bill would go up only $60. At 170, it'll go up $100, $109, I'm sorry, $109. So it's only $49.
It's 20.
Or 20 bucks, yeah, the difference. Yeah, 20, I'm sorry, no, 20 is a 72. At 170, it's...
But if you, with the 172, it's going up $80.
Yep.
With the 170, it's only going up 20 more dollars.
Yeah, so I would, yeah, if you do 172, it's only $20 extra. And if you do 172, the industrial's only going up three, you can save them $400. There's a bigger impact on industrial, it's a better message. Now, again, if you, I think if you don't want taxes to go up, you should vote against budgets that have tax increases in them. I probably will be saying something, you know, slightly different. If I send a budget, if, you know, mayor sends on a budget with a tax increase, and they're going to want you to vote for that. But when we do that and it gets passed, we all own it. And so we should all share across the board and not try to shelter others from it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Counselwoman. And Counsel LeMond.
I have a comment, and it's kind of a question for Mr. Iannello at the same time. I like the 170 factor, and I know who it hurts the worst in my district, and the people that I feel like we came up with the tool to help them, and we haven't done it. In February of 2012, this body voted to adopt something called the Senior Citizens Earned Property Tax Credit. Senior citizens could earn up to $500 back on their property taxes. In February of 2012, we voted to do that. In February of 2012, we voted to do that. We gave that office until December of 2012 to implement the process, we were told in December of 2012, for different reasons, it would be after January 1. After January 1, we were told, well, we're in the budget season, right after budget season, that will happen. It's December of 2013, it's two years now since we've adopted that as a body. In my district, I know my elderly residents that own single-family homes that are on fixed incomes are the ones that are going to be hurt by this the most. What bothers me about that is that we, as a body, went through great lengths to adopt something that would help them the most. So even though we might be raising their tax bill by $100, they could actually save $500 by volunteering in one of the offices, by acting as a crossing god, by doing a lot of different things around the city, by going to the senior center that they already go to for their lunch, but serving the lunch and earning that money, they could make up to $500 back on their tax bill, and then this will be a non-issue. And it just bothers me that it's two years later and we haven't implemented it, even though it's on our books as an ordinance, we don't have it in our practice. And I just think it would be a much easier pill for folks to swallow to say to them, look, we are going to raise your taxes, they are going to go up on average $200, but in reality, your bill's going to go down to $300 because you're going to work at the senior center, and after you've worked your 40 hours over the course of so many months, you're going to have a $500 credit, and it's going to be great because your bill's going to go down $300 in net. So we need to implement that practice, it needs to happen. It's not optional, we voted as a body two years ago to do it, and it's not fair to the people, especially elderly residents that are on fixed income. If that solution was in place right now, if we had to adopt, you know, we go to the 1.70, the problem that they have with their fixed income is a non-issue because we gave them another solution. And I just, I need a deadline, I need to know when that's going to happen. So I'd really like to ask you that question, Mr. Iannello. He needs the microphone, sorry.
I don't know the status of the Senior Circuit Baker Credit, I think is what you're referring to, but I sent it to Martha Velez, who is the senior director of the senior center. She's the one in charge of, and I think the council voted to have her in charge of the program. I just helped set it up and set up the forms. I did all that several months ago and turned it over to Martha Velez to start hiring or find out who, who is interested in the program and figure out how they're going to be used in the city. The mayor did, and again, this is at least six months ago, the mayor did, was emphatic about not just having any elderly person come in and, they had to do something for the city so the city would get a little bit of benefit out of it. I think historically, Martha Velez places many, many seniors with some of the federal programs she has with nonprofit agencies, and the mayor didn't feel he wanted to make sure they worked in City Hall or worked for some department. I don't know the status of how, whether anybody's been hired. They do get hired and they have one year to earn the 500 bucks.
So the program's in place.
Or to use $500 worth of hours, and then that gets reported to the assessors, has to be reported to the assessors by November 1. So I don't think they've received any, anything from November 1. So I don't know if anybody's not working or they just haven't reported the hours to the assessors yet.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding the process correctly. You're saying that as far as your office is concerned, you've created all the paperwork?
Exactly.
And you've passed it off to the senior center?
Yes, several months ago.
So now it sounds like more of a personnel issue where filling those spots?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Martha Velez the answer. I mean, I helped with the forms to get the, you know, there's a reporting mechanism, there's a process in place. Alex Vega did a lot of work trying to figure out, you know, what some other towns have done to adopt the paperwork, and I just finalized the paperwork, so it would be somewhat simpler to implement. And it's not quite, it's quite a complicated program, actually, because there's taxes and so forth, but, but the, the hard part is determining what the eligibility's going to be for, you know, for these seniors, what type of screening do they do, and then an outreach as to, you know, and again, Martha Velez is suited for that, not my office.
Okay, so that's not, that's gone past you now, that's what I'm...
Yeah, it's, you know, I don't know, it's many, many months, it's four to six months ago.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Ms. Iannello, just a follow-up question. How many people can actually benefit from this?
I believe we had a, off the top of my head, I just wrote it down, I thought it was 50, but it might be 100, but I think a maximum of 100. So it would be a 50, it's a, it's going to affect the overlay, in essence, it impacts the overlay up to $50,000. So in other words, we're going to collect $50,000 less in taxes if we, if we had 100 people all earning the maximum $500.
Thank you.
There's also...
Microphone.
...the Melvin Exemption.
Rita, grab the microphone.
Need the mic.
We also have available the elderly exemption, which is a certain amount off your taxes every year. A lot of times, the elderly aren't aware that we have this. You have to be 70 by July 1. There's income guidelines for the elderly. We're still doing it, if any of them want to come in and find out. It's either a 1.75 off their tax bill every year or a $500, depending on, obviously, their status and their income. So a lot of times, the elderly will call and say, we had no idea this was in place. I'm like 80 years old and I don't even know about it.
What is the, the maximum income though on that? It's pretty low.
Yeah, there's, I can send you the, the income guidelines, there's for widower, there's also for the veterans. Any veterans that are in the city, they're also eligible for it. They have to have a minimum for veterans of a 10% disability. And there's also exemptions available for the blind. So a lot of times, you know, we get phone calls and people say, we didn't even know you had those. I can get you the...
But you don't know the maximum income for those.
Thank you, do you have them? Can you get it?
Yes, I can get it. But I depends on how much money they make.
Right, right. Plus what they...
The discussion that they state it as to...
Right, yep, so it's worth it, sometimes people are right on the, you know, the level of, well, do I make it, don't I make it? But they can come in, we're still doing it, even after the bill goes out, if they're eligible, we'll give them a certificate and we can still take it off their bill.
And that can go up till February 1?
They can, no, yeah, February 1 is a different guideline. February 1 is the abatement deadline.
Yeah.
For the exemptions, no, they can come in after that, they can come in in March.
Really, okay.
Yeah. So it's, it's nice now, a lot of the elderly like to come in around the holidays because they know that, they come in, they fill in their application, and it's automatically taken off their bill, so they don't have to worry about it. It's not an issue to, it's not, they don't necessarily physically have to go to the office, we try to help them out as much as we can. We'll send them the paperwork by mail, they can send it back to us by mail, so if they can't get to City Hall for whatever reason, you know, we're happy to accommodate them. But they should check into it, a lot of the elderly out there, they're not aware that we have that in the city. So, I mean, and it's a guaranteed amount every single year off their tax bill.
That's a good, it would be helpful if we could let them know what that base income is, but yeah, no, that's, thank you.
And yeah, they are, they are kind of low, but the minimum age is age 70.
So I don't qualify. It's all good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Almonte?
Thank you.
And Counselor Tumey?
I had some of my questions answered through Counselor Bernal, but I have a quick If we had more companies, and the pie chart that she showed us here that talks about how much money comes in from the big corporations that we have here within the city, if we had more corporations that were paying more money into this tax base, would the property taxes go down? I mean, would, would what it is that we get from the property owners within the city, would that go down because there's a bigger property base of money coming in to the city? It would, right?
I think I can answer that, Counselor. The levy would still be 57 million.
Correct. So if we had more companies on that pie chart that would contribute to that levy, that means that we wouldn't have to raise taxes on the homeowner base that much, right? Because we would be reaching our levy elsewhere, we wouldn't be...
Well, the levy is the total value of all property in the city of Lawrence, including residential, commercial, industrial, and so on. So the 57 million is what our total value is today. If we brought in new businesses and increased our valuation, that would be considered new growth.
Okay, so that would help in, in adjusting what we raise in taxes on property owners, correct?
That, it would, it would, the, the shift from commercial to residential. Right now, the residential burden is approximately, we have 77%, I believe, of the, there's a slide in here, on Slide 10, the residential valuation is 77%, but the tax bill's only 61%. So I think that's what, this, this Slide 10, I believe, is what you're referring to, Counselor, where as if the, if the industrial and commercial was more than, right now, it's 17%, the two combined, although they pick up 30% of the tax bill. So if the commercial industrial property values were 50% and the real estate was 50, the numbers would be adjusted accordingly.
Because what I'm trying to get at here is, we have corporations and companies that want to come into our city, and we want to entice them to come within our city.
Sure.
But we have to be very careful who we're giving these tax incentives, the tax incentives to. Just because we're bringing in these new companies within our city, then we exempt them from having to pay taxes for a couple of years because they're going to hire people from within the city? Like, who's really going in to see what percentage in their corporations are Lawrence residents? We don't have anybody babysitting that. The other thing, too, is we're allowing them to have exemptions and incentives through our city, then that brings up the bracket on the other end, which is the, the people who, from our city who are trying to struggle to keep their homes, and here we are raising their values, and we're, we're not also, we're not also doing this, but we're also asking them to do the upkeeps on their properties, which they have no monies to do. So I'm just trying to figure out here in my head that we really need to, we really need to take a look at when we have new corporations coming into our city. Like I said, we want to entice them to come, but we have to be very careful because the more tax incentive breaks that we give them, even though they're trying to, they'll come and, you know, and do a great presentation for us and let us know what it is that they want to do within our city, but we could be getting a lot of money from these things and from these corporations that are here, and that will help the base in, for the property owners who are the people who are actually trying to, to keep their homes here within our city. What I'm trying to get at with this also is that we have a lot of people from the outside, they come within our, to our city to work, and they come in to work for these corporations, and the labor gets said that it's going to be occupied by Laurentians, but then all the people who operate are not from our city, and here we are giving them these huge tax breaks. And I think that we should, we need to take that back and, and start getting some of this money in so that the, the property owners from our city can, could finally see some relief in these increases. I mean, this is my thought, I'm not sure if I'm correct on this, but if someone...
Well, I think you are, in other words, on Slide 5, there is a, the industrial property valuations increased about 4.9 million, and there are some of that increase in property value is because some of the tax increment financing plans came off and came back on the, on the tax rolls in full. So that the, the special deals that you refer to that sometimes communities make to entice a, a commercial or industrial or, or properties to come into the city, we do make, we do decrease their tax burden and make deals with them, if you will, to get, to attract their businesses. Oftentimes, those, those agreements are, have some, some strings attached, and if some of those strings are broken, as you're perhaps maybe suggesting, we'd like to know that because we may be able to, that may negate their value of their plan.
That's my point.
So I think they're usually very protective of that, but...
Are we going to be having some of those come off those rolls anytime soon?
They do, I'm not, there's quite a few of them that we have, and the assessors keep track of how many are outstanding and what the, what the, when they come off the tax rolls.
Yeah.
Or come on the tax rolls, I should say. And there were quite a few, or not quite a few, but a few that came in this year in this FY14, which impacted the industrial property from FY14 to 13.
Correct, because I know, I know of a few companies that are multimillion-dollar companies here within our city, and we're giving them a tax break, and this is coming off of the, you know, it's hitting the pockets of the residents. I mean, I'm not an expert in, in real estate or anything by any means, but what I, from sitting here, it's just, you know, I understand that we're trying to give residents of the city of Lawrence jobs, but what we're doing is giving them labor jobs, and, and then the people who are running these corporations that are making the big dollars are getting the tax break.
It's a national, it's a national program.
And I think it's a little unfair, and I think that we, we need to start pulling the reins back on this because it, my mother owns two properties here within the city, they need to be up-kept. The, her tax bills are going up, we've got people who are moving out of the city to entice somebody into, into these apartments that have been in the city for a very long time, when you have new businesses that are coming in and building these beautiful, beautiful lofts, how do you compete with that? So we really need to, I'm just trying to say that the residents of District A and across the city, because I, I don't only take care of the residents of District A, but it's just, it's, it's a little bothersome to me that we continue to give tax breaks. It's like the 1% that, you know, they can afford a lot of things, but yet they get stuff sponsored to them. That, that's very bothersome when you have the people, the little ones, trying to survive. Thank you.
Counselor Tumey? And Counselor Almonte?
Michael's first. No, no, you were first. Does anyone have any statistics? I'm looking at this on page nine, the fact is that we're back in 2011, '12, and '13, and the fact has gone down from 1.75 to 1.72, and now there's, there's suggestions to drop it down to 1.70. Do we have any information within the city that tells us that because we've dropped this factor on the, on the industrial and commercial, that there's been any improvement in the labor, in the amount of people that are working within the city? In other, in other words, if a person, if a business is going to have to pay less than taxes because we've gone ahead and adjusted this, this factor, is there any proof to show that this has been positive for the, for the city and for the homeowners, we're paying a higher portion of the, of the monies that are required for the city?
I don't think so. I think you're asking, are there any statistics whether the, the tax increment financing plans have any benefit to the city? I don't have any employment data with me, but each of those agreements was, a break in their taxes was, was negotiated between the company and the city at the time the TIF was, was developed. And, and there was, I'm sure there was a back and forth, you know, how to get them into the city, and we would either take something off their bill or have some type of, as I've mentioned to Counselor Almonte, some, you know, some strings were attached to that deal that we made, whether it's employ a minimum of 100, you know, residents or something. But there, there, there's, they run the gamut of, of deals that one makes, so I don't know what the...
What I'm looking for is we, we've reduced, we've lowered the factor on businesses three times. From 2011, 2012, it went to 1.73, then down to 1.72, and now the suggestion is to drop it down to 1.70, which indicates that businesses are going to be paying less in taxes, and that difference is going to be made up on the homeowners. But has there been any kind of proof to show that because we are doing this, that there's been any kind of an increase within the city of businesses coming in with, within the city or employment within the city?
I don't think you can make a correlation between the two. Again, this is just a tax factor, and it's, you know, in other words, I think what you're...
The tax factor...
We're giving a small break, well, the proposal is to give a, a further small break to the industrial and commercial properties and, and increase the, with a 1.70 factor, increase the residential a little bit.
It all goes...
I, I don't know if you can draw, draw a relationship between businesses, successful businesses and are the residents making out? It's a, you know...
And it all goes back to dollars.
Yeah.
It all goes back to dollars.
It all goes back to dollars, you're right, and it's, you know, as, as was just proposed, it's a, it's an increase of 20 to 1 and a decrease of 300 or 400 to another.
Right, but there has to be some way of indicating that because these businesses are getting a tax break, by us lowering the factor, there has to be something...
I don't know how to, I wouldn't know how to begin to quantify that, Counselor, I just don't think I could.
Anyways, my thoughts are, I'm not going to be voting for 1.70, I know that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I, I haven't, if I, if I may?
One second, I know, Council Plant was next.
If there's, I'll, I'll leave it to Cory if he wants to clarify, and I'll take it back.
Yeah, just a point of information. Yeah, and I didn't call it that because I didn't want to jump in. The, I think something anecdotal that we can look at is, I don't know if everybody recalls the, the first couple of times that we did this, there was at least four or five business people in this, in the audience talking about the jumps in their, in their, in their bills every year. And it's just too bad that the, that just as we really started to discuss this, that the, the chamber left. the chamber left, the Chamber of Commerce came and made a statement, then left and didn't really participate in this discussion. But, you know, I think that that, to me, is anecdotal, and when we go talk to businesses, that they, they understand that we, because of the crunch that we came out of in 2009, that there was going to be tax increases, and that they appreciated that we weren't bringing the whole hammer on them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor LaPlante?
Thank you so much. So I want to echo what the mayor Lex said earlier tonight with regards to, this is two parts of the budget. The first part is the actual voting of the budget in June, and now we've got to pay, partly pay for the budget through our taxes. And so as an individual who did not vote for the budget this past year, and the reason why primarily is because, for the budget, is primarily because I did not see one additional police officer added to our rolls, and I know the people in my district don't mind paying taxes and may even begrudgingly accept an increase in taxes, but they want to see public safety, and if they don't see additional public safety with an increase in taxes, then they don't want to see their taxes go up at all. They just, they want to see a measure of services with corresponding taxes. So I'm going to be voting no on this for the very reason why I didn't vote for this budget to start off with, and now I don't feel compelled and obligated to support a budget that didn't support, support one of the most critical components of a city's responsibility, which is public safety. But what I want to do is, I want to change the optics a little bit as well, and I think this is the time to talk about it because we're about to enter a new season here in January, and we're going to be going through a budget cycle, and I think we need to take a look at exactly where do we fit statewide with respect to our taxes and with respect to state aid, because it all comes in together, and I think we need to take a look at where, what should one of our priorities be? And I would argue strongly that we need to make our city more self-sufficient, meaning we need to be less reliant on state aid, because if we remain reliant on state aid as much as we are now, what we saw two or three years ago with tremendous cuts in police and fire, it's only a matter of time when we will revisit that, because as we all know, budgets and economies are cyclical. We have up times, we have down times, up times and down times, and at some point, we're going to have that downtime again, and if we are as reliant as we are today on state aid, we will, again, years, who knows when that time will be, but there will be a time again where once again, we're going to feel the brunt, where citizens again will not feel safe, where we will rely on our neighboring communities to provide us basic fire protection, and we need to do what we can do to be more self-sufficient and more self-sustaining. Let me give you some numbers. Out of our budget, sixty-seven percent of our budget comes from state aid. Correspondingly, let me give you some data with respect to other communities like Lawrence. Lowell, forty-nine percent state aid. Lynn, fifty-five percent state aid. Haverhill, thirty-one percent state aid. Brockton and Fall River, both at forty-six percent state aid, New Bedford at forty-seven, and Holyoke at fifty-three. Once again, we are at sixty-seven, meaning we are only bringing in about thirty-three percent on our own, on our own backs. So as we look at how are we getting from point A to point B, let's also look at what we're paying for taxes. And this may be counterintuitive, because here's a guy who's fiscally conservative saying, look at these numbers, but I think it's important that we, as we look across the Commonwealth at what those numbers are, we are paying, as of FY 2013, on average, two thousand five hundred and thirty dollars. Again, two thousand five hundred and thirty dollars, that's for residential, okay? There is no other community that comes close to us that's in our league for the amount of taxes that are paid, except for the town of Fall River, who has a slight decrease. They're at two thousand five hundred and five, their average is twenty-five dollars less than us. Lowell, thirty-two seventy-three. Lynn, thirty-six fifty-one, throwing these fast at you. Haverhill, thirty-eight thirty. New Bedford, twenty-seven sixty-three. Holyoke, thirty-three thirty. All of these are five to eight, or maybe even a thousand dollars more. So if you were to move to any one of these communities, your taxes would be higher in those communities as compared to what we're facing here. Now, there's some big questions here. How do we get the services that we need in Lawrence, keeping in mind that, as odd as this may sound, throughout the Commonwealth, we are fairly low. As a matter of fact, out of the three hundred and fifty-one communities, we're ranked three hundred and thirteenth. Again, out of the people like myself in my neighborhood, people throughout the neighborhood, we're paying less taxes, generally speaking, per average, per average. Some people are paying more, some people are paying less, per average. We're paying less in our city than almost, almost every other community throughout the Commonwealth. We need to put some optics on that. Another thing we need to consider as well as we enter this new year is, where do we get these new revenues? I think the council from yesterday talked about bringing in new business. I agree a hundred percent. One of the keys to generate the economy is to get businesses in. You know, we use these TIFs, of course, to try to provide incentives to have them come in because we're competing, not only in our region but statewide and also across the border in New Hampshire for businesses. So what the counselor says is right on, that we need to start dealing with tax incentives, and what do we need to do? Are they important? Do we need them? We need to reevaluate those things. But let me just say this as well, we have a burgeoning and large nonprofit community in our city. We have, and let me throw some numbers, some more at you. My last data was from 2010. We have a hundred and twenty tax exempted organizations, ballpark roughly, a hundred and twenty tax exempted organizations. Roughly speaking, they own approximately twelve hundred parcels, twelve hundred units. That's an awful lot. I don't have the exact dollar amounts, but let me just say it's in the millions, perhaps hundreds of millions, maybe over a hundred million, maybe over a hundred million, I need to get the clarification on that, of assessed value. We have in tax title, the housing committee's been working on tax title. If you go through the list, if we ask for it, and I'm going to ask for it tonight, can we, I'd like to make a motion right now that we ask the city assessor's office to provide to the housing committee a list of all the tax title, tax title properties and their assessed values. Make that into form of a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is that clear to the assessor's office that I'm looking for? Okay, thank you. So, you know, we have, we need to be smart about what we're doing, but we need to understand that we have businesses, we have nonprofits, we have residences, and we're giving, there's a big part, we need to have a conversation potentially with some of our nonprofits, as painful as this might be, about whether or not they want to, they're doing an awful lot now, no one's getting that, whether it's Lawrence General Hospital, who's providing medical care, to various other nonprofits with their singular identities doing certain great things, but we need to have a discussion with them about, if we continue on, they need services from us as well, they do provide services, but is that equal, or is there enough bang for the buck? Cambridge goes through this, they have a tremendous number of institutions, higher of education, we, you know, we don't have as many here, obviously, but we have a lot of churches, for example, who own a lot of spaces, both, you know, the Catholic Church, for example, has got a lot of spaces in the city of Lawrence, and they don't pay taxes on stuff, and a lot of smaller storefront churches also. So we can go across the board. I just opened up Pandora's Box, by the way, by talking about this, but, but that's, if we're going to be honest with ourselves, counselors, that has to be on the table for discussion. So I say all that because I want to change the optics, I want to challenge us as a city to use as a priority, let's see if we can reduce the amount of money that we are dependent on from the state, and let's try to be more self-sustaining. Let's see if we can do that as a council and as an administration, working together on those things. Thank you.
Anybody else? No? Is a motion on the table, or was second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Roll call.
Counsel Vasquez?
No.
Is this the motion to send the thing to that?
One point seven oh to approve.
One point seven oh, approve.
Did we vote on your motion?
I didn't make the motion.
Yeah, we voted on his motion.
Your motion was voted.
The motion was to get documentation.
My motion is to get it passed.
Oh, that already passed.
Okay, that's what I missed.
One point seven oh.
Motion to pass one point seven oh.
Correct. Counsel Vasquez?
No.
Counsel LaPlante?
No.
Counsel Toomey? Noted. Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Almonte?
No.
Counsel Kino?
Yes.
Counsel Bernal?
Yes.
Counsel Vice President?
Yes.
Counsel President?
Chevos, no.
Is it voted on by Counsel President?
Four, four.
Make a motion to adopt one point seven one?
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? Roll call, please.
Counsel Vice President?
Yes.
Excuse me. Counsel, Counsel Bernal?
Yes.
Counsel Kino?
Yes.
Counsel Almonte?
No.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Toomey, noted, and Counsel LaPlante?
No.
Counsel Vasquez?
Yes.
And Counsel President?
Chevos, yes.
Motion carries.
Pass six, two, one abstained.
Appointed personal privilege?
Appointed personal privilege, Mr. Counsel Rivera, Counsel Vice Chair Rivera.
Thank you, just something real quick, I think it's important to note that this is year four that we passed the budget on time, and we set a tax rate on time, and we set the factor on time, and I think that's important to note, that we didn't kill each other over this process, that in the past has been something very tumultuous and difficult for us to do, so I just wanted to thank everybody for this because it's not easy. Thanks. Especially with your guidance, Counsel President.
I want to thank you guys, the Budget and Finance Committee, for doing a phenomenal job in sending this file up here on time. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the council, counselor, and before the counselors leave, they need to sign what they voted on so we can submit it to the Department of Revenue, it's an annual form. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is document two seventy-one, National Grid and Verizon request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures on Lowell Street. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
I'm going to abstain. Document two seventy-one, 2012. Notice is hereby given to City Council, hold a public hearing.
I don't sign this, right? Okay.
On December third, 2013, in Council Chambers, City of Lawrence, 7:00 P.M. The purpose of the hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a petition presented by and on behalf of National Grid requesting the City of Lawrence by and through its council members grant permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across a public way known as Lowell, out of Hampshire Streets, with locations approximately shown on a plan provided by the petitioner and appearing with the notice that was sent to a list of abutters prepared by the assessor's office. Notice was sent out, parking ten days in advance of this hearing.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody wish to be heard? Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, David Boucher, Senior Design Technician, National Grid, 1101 Turnpike Street, North Andover. This first petition of three that we're asking for on Lowell Street is a location for a new pole. What this will enable us to do is to increase the reliability of electricity by giving us a place where we can place an air brake, a load brake, which we can switch our feeders around with. When the power goes out on one feeder, we can switch it to another, and that's why we're looking for this particular pole locations, if you have any question, this particular pole location, if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Thank you. Anybody else on this? No, public hearing is now closed. Counselor, what's your pledge?
I would vote to approve this decision.
So here's second?
Second.
Second with discussion? Well, actually...
Counsel Almonte?
The, my discussion question wasn't even on this one.
Okay.
It's on something else, so...
All right.
But it has to do with National Grid.
Anybody else? So motion on the table has been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstain. Abstain. Roll call, please.
Counsel Vasquez?
Abstain.
Noted. Counsel LaPlante?
Yes.
Counsel Toomey, noted. Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Almonte?
Yes.
Counsel Kino?
Yes.
Counsel Bernal?
Yes.
Counsel Vice President?
Yes.
Counsel President?
Chevos, yes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is document two fifteen, National Grid and Verizon request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures on Park Street. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document two fifteen of 2013. Notice is hereby given to City Council, hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December third, 2013, in Council Chambers, 200 Common Street at 7:00 P.M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a petition presented by or on behalf of National Grid requesting the City of Lawrence by and through its city council members to grant permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across a public way known as Park Street, with locations as provided on a plan attached to the notice dated seven, eight, 2013, as provided to a list of abutters given to the city clerk's office and mailed out approximately ten days before this hearing.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody wish to be heard? No? Yes?
Yes, once again, David Boucher.
Name and address again.
David Boucher from National Grid again. Park Street, we had a customer call in, and they asked us to move the pole nine feet, and we're petitioning to move it. We would remove the existing pole and place this new pole approximately nine feet east of where it exists right now on Park Street. They plan on placing driveway or using, having easy, more easy access to the side of the building where they want to use for parking.
Thank you. Anybody else? On document two fifteen.
Dick Russell, 34 Cross Street. I see that National Grid and Verizon are both on this. I missed it on the first one. I asked the question that keeps getting popped up. How are they doing in removing the double poles? I mean, they keep coming looking for permission. I thought that about a year ago, you guys were going to crack down on them. You didn't remove the double poles or start making an active effort to remove them. Permission was going to be kind of tough, okay? How are we doing?
They're actually doing a good job. They have given us an update now, not as, not as fast as we wanted to, but they've given us an update. I think they've removed like fifty or a hundred of them already.
How many, how many, how many are left?
There was, there's still quite a few, not what we like. Trust me, this is something that, that we've been debating for the last, I've been debating for the last six years, but most of us are...
Well, unless this, unless they come up for another thing next week, this is your last time listening to this, right?
No, I know, I know. I was going to say something, but no. Anybody else? Document two fifteen. Number two fifteen? Okay. Public hearing is now closed. Counselor, what's your pledge?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Abstain.
Abstain. Nobody else, just hand.
Want me to just note it? You want to do a roll call?
Do the roll call, yeah. Just make sure.
Counsel Vice President?
Yes.
Counsel Bernal?
Yes.
Counsel Kino?
Yes.
Counsel Almonte?
Yes.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Toomey, noted. Counsel LaPlante?
Yes.
Counsel Vasquez? And Council President.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is document two seventy-eight, National Grid, request permission to place a, place underground electric conduit on General Street. Mr. Clerk, read the notice.
Document two seventy-eight, two thousand twelve. Notice is hereby given the City Council, hold a public hearing on Tuesday, December third, two thousand thirteen, City Council Chambers, two hundred Common Street, Lawrence Mass, seven P M. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning a petition presented by or on behalf of National Grid of North Andover, requesting the City of Lawrence, by and through its City Council members, grant permission to excavate the public ways and to run and maintain underground electrical conduits, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as said company may deem necessary in the public way as requested in the petition submitted by said company dated September tenth, two thousand twelve. Said underground electric conduits shall be located substantially in accordance with the plan filed with the petition as provided to a list of abutters and along the way known as General Street.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody wish to be heard? Name and address for the record, please.
David Boucher, National Grid, um, on this particular petition, we are asking for underground, two underground conduits, four inches encased in concrete, coming from our pole thirty-nine seventy-five, uh, to a new location at the Lawrence General Hospital. Currently, they are serviced, uh, from a pole that's about a hundred feet further up the road in, into the, I believe it's the Hamlet Building. I'm not positive about that, but where their location is right now, um, they want to relocate their electric room to a different part of the building, and they're gonna reuse the area where their electric room is now for some other type of, uh, equipment of some sort. They have plans to do things. So, but this is enabling us to provide power to them, uh, from a different pole than they are currently being, uh, serviced from. And if you have any questions, I could answer that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public hearing is now closed. Councillor, what's your pledge?
Motion to approve? Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Well, abstain. Abstain.
Roll call.
Council Vasquez.
Abstain.
Council LaPlante.
Yes.
Council Toomey, noted. Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Almonte.
Yes.
Council Aquino.
Yes.
Council Bernal.
Yes.
Council Vice President.
Yes.
And Council President.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Next item on the agenda.
Point of information, if I can. Um, I needed to ask, um, David a question, please, um, since he's here from National Grid. I wanted to know what this.
Is it on a particular document, or?
No, 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 not on, in general. In general. Um, there was supposed to be a, some type of lighting being put in, um, the park on, um.
Champaign Common?
I'm sorry?
On the Common?
No, 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 not on the Common, over on, um, oh my goodness, the Scravito Park. Um, there's some lighting that was supposed to go in there, and you guys came before us, I believe it was in the spring. I was wondering if, what's going on with that, or are you guys in the process?
Can you do me a favor? Can you guys take that, like, offline, so we can finish the agenda? Because that's, it's not, it's not only agenda, we want to take that offline, so we can finish.
Okay.
You stick around, so you can answer that question for her?
I don't have an answer for you. You know what I could do is just give you, um.
There was a woman that came with you guys that went in subcommittee. She is specifically the community relations person.
That's correct, Kathy Moore.
Kathy. We need to get her, Kathy's, she'd be the better person to answer.
Don't have her phone number, but, uh, if, do you want to just write down your phone number?
That's fine.
I'll give you a call tomorrow morning, and with Kathy's number or something.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks. Next item on the agenda is communication from Mayor City officials. There's none. Appropriation orders and resolutions, document three oh eight, appropriation, snow and sand in Mass General Law, chapter forty-four, section thirty-one D, submitted by John R. Isensi, Acting Director of the Public Works. So, items going down to the Budget and Finance Committee. Document, uh, next item on the agenda is committee reports, document two ninety-two, parking Acton Street South Side, three thirty-minute parking spaces, Monday through Sunday, from eight A M. to nine P M., submitted by myself, came up from the Budget, from the Orders Committee. Madam Chair from the Orders.
We had a request from the Subcommittee to, um, look at parking on Acton Street on the south side. We did not have the officers report back at our Subcommittee meeting. So it came up from the Subcommittee with a unanimous, um, favorable recommendation to send it up without a recommendation. So I make a motion to approve the committee report.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Since our Subcommittee meeting, though, Officer Scanlon did send us an email that I believe is in our packages tonight, basically saying that he's concerned because of the width of Acton Street is not very wide. Um, initially, there was no parking either side of the street. They did put in some spaces on one side of the street, on the northerly side. Now they're looking for additional parking on the southerly side. And his concern was that we would not be able to get an emergency vehicle. The space left would only be about thirteen feet, which would not be sufficient for an emergency vehicle like a fire truck to get through. So his, um, recommendation was that we deny this, um, application at this time. And, um, so I would be making a motion to withdraw the document.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Aye, it's having. Next item on the agenda is document two ninety-eight. Uh, actually, councillors, I.
We didn't have that meeting.
Uh, the councillor, I pulled this number, this item, from the, uh, from the Personnel Committee. We received a letter from, uh, I believe is Patrick Blanchett, Government Development Director.
Mm-hmm.
They no longer need disposition, I guess, based on Mass General Law, she cannot participate in this committee till February. According to the letter we got from, so I'm looking, I, I just brought it up because we have to make a decision within thirty days since it's submitted to the City Council. So I decided to pull it from the committee. So I'm looking for a motion to withdraw two ninety-eight.
Without prejudice?
So moved.
Will be.
So moved.
Would that be without prejudice?
Well, they're gonna have to re-submit it again sometime next year. If you want to do without prejudice, that's fine.
Just so that we are able to take her back in February, because if not, it'll be a whole year, right?
I'll amend the motion.
Addend the motion, okay.
Can I just, a point of information or inquiry, I'm not sure which it is. Um, at our last meeting, um, the Acting Chair pulled the document up from Subcommittee, which we did vote eight to zero to pull up from Subcommittee. Um, and I did get a email, unsolicited email, from the City Attorney after the meeting, questioning our ability to do that. He didn't realize we'd actually made a motion to pull it up eight to zero. Um, so I did say, you know, please take another look at the minutes, but there was actually, he was saying that you do need an affirmative vote to pull something out of Subcommittee.
No, the Council President has the ability to do that, to pull it from any committee, I see discretion. You don't need to suspend the rules or take it as an emergency. You don't need that. Uh, some of the reasons why I don't do it is because I have good chairs in my committees. And, you know, I prefer to have them handle those issues down in the committee. I remember my first term here, you know, for the former Council President that was there, decided to pull an item from the Housing Committee. And, uh, you know, it was obviously a debate, battle, uh, that I didn't want to go through. But I believe in the people in this, in this committee. I believe in you, all you guys. I believe in the chairpersons of this committee. I don't think that I should be able to pull things from your committee without your consent as chairpersons. I think that's your duty. I think you were elected to be a chair of each committee to make that decision. And I wouldn't, I would never do that to any of the committee chairs. And that's the rea- this is the first time I did this, actually, by the way. I was gonna do it last time when I was here, but I was somewhere else, and.
Yeah.
Thank you for stepping, stepping up to the plate, Mr. Vice Chair.
So you don't think we need to?
No, we don't.
Okay.
We don't. I already, uh, went through this in the past. Uh, there were a few times that I wanted to, but then I won't do it. So it's a motion on the table to withdraw it without prejudice. It was, was it second?
No. Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Aye, it's having. There's another item on the Budget and Finance Committee agenda that I want to take from that committee, which is item two ninety-seven, the acceptance of a federal HMIS two grant in the amount of sixty-five thousand eight hundred sixty-three. This item was submitted by Susan Fink. Uh, and this is with the consent of the chairperson from the Budget and Finance Committee. Looking for a motion to approve?
So moved.
Right here, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Aye, it's having. Next item on the agenda is, oh, business is none, table matters.